Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Let the record show we have all commissioners present, one by teams. Mr. Riddle.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good evening, Commissioner Riddle. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item this evening is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There is no change to the Order of Business this evening.
Are there any questions on the Order of Business? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? If not all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda the commissioners wish to discuss? There are no items on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing no discussion, will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. We will move into Administration and Finance. First item this evening is the findings of our demolition hearing. This will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all recall, we had a prior hearing last week regarding a demolition of this structure. As part of that policy, C-Code requires that you adopt findings based on those hearing requirements. So included in your packet is the proposed findings. You'll need to go through and determine if those findings are appropriate. What will happen after that is, once those findings are officially adopted by this commission, those findings will then be served upon the property owner, and the property owner does have 30 days to object and to appeal to the district court should he or they, in this case, choose to do so. If that does not happen, then at that point, after that, the city Building and Codes Department would seek to secure bids for the demolition of the structure and assess the property, assess the cost to the property. I would stand for any questions that you have with regard to the proposed findings.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the procedure for demolition and/or the Ms. Winko, are there any further presentation that you need to do?
No, Mr. President. This is just in the packet for your recollection. This was the PowerPoint that was shown at the demolition hearing.
The only question I have is, do we know if the person that showed up at the hearing was authorized to represent the ownership group, since there is three owners?
So, the way that we've taken that position is that the owners of the home or the property were notified. Technically, the two that did not show up, given the fact that they did receive certified mailings, technically are in default.
Are there any questions on the findings of fact by commissioners? If there are no questions on the findings of fact, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the findings of fact by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Okay. I know there's a little bit of delay, so I'll give that to Commissioner Riddle.
That's fine.
Any further questions on the findings of fact and the motion to approve them? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, you have an update on the polling location.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Before you this evening is consideration to approve the special election polling location at the Beijou Activity Center. The date would be August 18th, which is a Monday. The voting hour would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Mountain Time. I am looking for a motion to approve that location.
This is Resolution 16-2025. Are there any questions on the location or this resolution? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussing, discussion on the polling location? Again, this is Resolution 16-2025. Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. Our next item this evening is a gaming site authorization. Mr. Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you this evening is a gaming site authorization request from the Dunn County Fair Association. This would be for the All-In Events and Catering located at 20 East Broadway Street. Effective date of this would be July 1st of 2025 to June 30th of 2026. This would be for bingo pull tab dispensing devices, electronic pull tab device, 21 and poker. City staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the gaming site authorization? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. We have a beer-only liquor license, Mr. Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. We did receive a liquor license application from the King Buffet, which is located at 1173 Threed Avenue West, Suite Number 23. This would be a new ownership group. This is a type of license that is unlimited in issuance. We have went through the background check on the new owner, which would be Mingdang Jong. City staff has reviewed the application, the appropriate fees have been paid, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the beer-only liquor license for King Buffet? I'd look for a motion if there are no questions.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries. We will move into Community Development. The first item up is the Wall and Cook rezoning. This will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So, the applicant is requesting the approval of a zoning act amendment from low-density residential or R1 to medium-density residential or R2 for lots 2, 3, and 4 of Block 14 of the Cooks and O'Bills Fourth Division of Division located within the city of Dickinson. The purpose of this rezone is to allow the applicant to develop the properties with single-family detached residences. The applicant has also submitted an associated irregular flat that will be considered if this proposed zoning act amendment is approved. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff recommends approval of this rezone.
This is the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1818 for the Wall and Cook rezoning. Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Are there any questions for Ms. Burcek on this rezone request? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1818.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is a corridor overlay district boundaries. Ms. Burcek.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, the city is requesting the approval of a zoning text amendment to Division 5 Corridor Overlay District as found in Chapter 62 Zoning of the Dickinson Municipal Code to include Fairway Street in Section 62-318 boundaries of the corridor overlay district. This addition will require future commercial and public site developments along Fairway Street to abide by the development standards and regulations of the corridor overlay district. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. This is the second reading of the zoning text amendment. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Are there any questions on Ordinance 1819? If there are no ordinance, questions on Ordinance 1819, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? If there are no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes "aye," motion carries.
Thank you.
And that is it for our normal agenda. We will move into Public Comment section, and as I've done in the past, any city staff that wishes to leave may leave at this time. First individual that wishes to speak to the city commission is Debbie Biffert, and this is in reference to commercial properties.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and city, oh, it just escaped me, Commissioners. I have a little issue that I wanted to bring, and I'm not, I wasn't sure where to start, but I thought I would start here. I currently have recently moved from 210 Third Street West, really liked there, but if I understand correctly, I think that what I'm here to, that there is a state law against smoking unless you're 20, within 20 feet of a building, which is commercial property. And I contacted the landlord there because there were two people below him in those, one of the three apartments that are located to the west of his home, and I think you probably know where I'm talking about, but I really don't want to mention too many names because I really appreciate and like this landlord, but he would not enforce the law. He said that they had a rental agreement about no smoking in the apartment. They smoked in the apartment. They would come in and out of the apartment with lit cigarettes. I have videos of, that would back up what I'm saying. My question is, is that are you, as a commission, able to enforce the state law, or where would I go, or where could you direct me to go? Because I did go and get this. They did call LE on me, and the law enforcement officer who came into my house, into my apartment, was not very nice. I love law enforcement, I support them, I'm a Lyft driver, I think they support us, and I absolutely support and back the blue, but this gentleman was very rude and borderline, well, he was very unprofessional, and he told me that that is not commercial property. But I have hear from the North Dakota Assessors website, North Dakota State, that that is all commercial property at 210 West Third Street. But instead of whenever the landlord would approach them about my complaint and/or complaints at certain periods of time, they would tell him they weren't smoking in the apartment, they would tell him they don't come in and out with lit cigarettes, but he would not enforce it. He told me to go talk to the man who lives there, who is not even, the apartment is not even in his name, and I did try to talk to the lady who rents the apartment in her name, and she never, she would not listen to me. She would not even hear me out. She always wanted to text about it, and I said, "No, I want to talk in person." So then she promised that they would not smoke, but they continued. So I want to know where I go from here, what's your advice? Like I said, here's the proof it's commercial property. If you'd like to see it, I can give it to you.
And that's fine. I would say with the complaint, you know, specifically with our law enforcement officer, I would talk to Mr. Dossinger, who can then talk to the police chief. But enforcing the state, the smoking, we'll have to look at forwarding your complaint to Southwest Health and probably Buildings and Codes for enforcement.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I think the best case in that scenario, ma'am, would probably be to, I would say probably provide the Dickinson Police Department your information. Typically, when it comes to the interpretation of the no smoking in public areas, public areas has a specific definition by statute, so whether that can be done, anything about that would depend on whether you fall into that category and whether that would fall into that definition. So that would have to be looked at, there's a whole lot of things that would factor into that, but I think if you provided that information, that information could then be provided to whomever might be able to assist you.
I did talk to the officers above his boss, I guess. I did talk to him, and I did tell him that it, according to the state law and according to the North Dakota Assessors Office, that it is commercial property, and the law enforcement officer who came into my apartment, I don't know, he said, "What's going on here?" And I said, "I have no idea what you're talking about," and he said, he just totally said to me, "This is not commercial property." And I said, "Well, I beg to differ, and if I have to, I'll take it to court, and we'll let the courts decide." And they also complained about my cameras. Everybody in Dickinson has cameras, but I said, "Well, did they complain about my cameras?" And he said, "Yes," but I told them, "That's nothing that they can do about that." As long as it's not aimed into their apartment, which it's not, it was aimed towards the street.
Well, ma'am, I think the best thing that you can do is provide the information, and it would be looked at to determine if, if in fact, there is anything that can be done. Like I said, commercial properties, public spaces, public areas have specific definitions, so it would have to be dependent upon whether they would qualify for those, and I can't say sitting here right now, but I think the best case would be to provide that information so we can take a look at it. I'm not saying the city can do anything, but I'm saying it can be looked at to determine if it could.
Okay, do you want this information here?
What is that specifically?
This is the North Dakota Assessors website about that specific property, and it's labeled "commercial."
I would suggest that whatever you have, put in a packet of some sort, and then provide it to the Dickinson Police Department, and Deputy Chief Hanson is sitting in the back, so he's going to be very well aware of.
Well, I did provide it to the officer and his upper management. I did provide it to them, and I've not heard from them at all.
Well, we, we're hearing it, and so we'll, and just, I would say that before you leave, maybe when you exit, if you can get your phone number to Mr. Hanson, that would be great.
Okay, and I also wanted to say that I do have certain health issues, and since I had a heart attack in February of last year, or yes, 2024, and so I don't want to smell cigarette smoke. And if the law says you smoke 20 feet away from the building, that's what I expect, and I expect the landlord to enforce it, and he told me he didn't want to get involved. So somebody needs to be involved.
And I think what we will also do is, we will likely notify Southwest District Health. They are very actively involved when it comes to things of this nature with smoking regulations, so, but again, please, before you leave, Deputy Chief Hanson will grab your phone number, okay?
I will, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You guys have a great evening.
You too. Thank you, Ms. Biffert. Next public comment sign-up is Bobby Joe Helgason, complaint filed.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. You guys all got my complaint, I'm assuming? Frederick, you got my complaint? Yes or no?
I have acknowledged I sent you an email that I didn't receive.
You did, yep. I got one from you, and I got one from Dr. Bear, but I did not get one from Joe Riddle or Jason. I have another 25 pages of whistleblower information that needs to be addressed as well. We have a huge problem in the city of Dickinson, and it needs to be addressed. And I'm going all the way to his position, to her position, to the police department's position. It's awful. You go against these people, it's retaliation all the way to the top, and it's uncalled for, and it needs to stop. You four up there can stop this madness that's going on in Dickinson. You all know what's going on, every one of you. I've asked for open records requests several times. The last open records request I asked for, for my son for his traffic ticket. Seth asked for discovery for his traffic ticket. No response, nothing, zero. El Zippo. I asked for it, we're going to charge you for it. He shouldn't be giving it to him anyway, and she's the one that's doing it, and it's his job, according to the city auditor. The city auditor is supposed to be giving out that stuff, and it's a conflict of interest. She's got her hands in everything, and I mean everything. She writes up contracts for the Sheriff's Department, she runs two, three, four cities in the city of Dickinson, the Bellfield, she's even the state's attorney in Golden Valley. I mean, I even called the public defenders and had it out with them, and you know what they told me? Talk to Christina. I mean, does she control the whole city? Does she control you guys? I mean, I don't understand why everything goes on in the city of Dickinson, you have to talk to her, when she is a big problem of what's going on in the city. And I'm being serious. You know, like, I called up to Williston, I've talked to some people up in Williston. They told me that their commissioners, they each have a certain part of the city that they watch over. Like, one will take over the police department, take care of that, and oversee it. Do you guys do that, or you don't do that? Well, I think you guys should start, because we have a huge problem.
That was abolished by the city commission in 1999.
Well, I think it needs to be brought back, because if you're leaving it all into his hands, like that lady said, that officer was rude to her. This isn't the first time. Not too long ago, an officer beat the crap out of a person, and it's got to stop. You guys, you can't tell me you don't know about it. I know you know about it. It has to stop, it's getting out of control. We have rights. Our rights are being violated every day. It just needs to stop. Like I said, I got 25 more pages that I'm going to send to you guys. It has to stop. There is no due process in our municipality courts at all, none whatsoever. None whatsoever. She signs the judge's orders even, or maybe she's just stamping them, I don't know, but the judge isn't even signing his orders. I mean, it's out of control here. I'm asking you guys to please, to please do your job and start protecting us, and not just me, not my family, not these guys' family, the whole community, because it's getting out of control. CPS, I don't even know, how many kids did CPS take out of Dickinson from families because they can? Uncalled for, or because of retaliation, because, why? Because somebody in this room don't like somebody? It has to stop. I'm being serious here, and I don't know if you guys are taking me serious. You guys are looking at me like, "Okay, are you done?" But I'm being serious. We have a problem in Dickinson. We do. Dr. Bear, I mean, don't you agree? You don't see it? I mean, what?
I'm just here to listen to you right now.
So no comments from any of you guys? You guys are just not going to do nothing?
I sent you an email with a comment.
I didn't get an email. Yeah, you sent me an email saying you got it, that's it, that's all I've gotten.
I think there's more to that. You probably need to read the second line.
I'll go back in and reread it.
And that's five minutes, Ms. Helgason.
Oh, we got a time limit now, okay.
The next public comment sign-up is Tariqa Holmes, Broken System.
154 days, there comes a time when silence is betrayal. Imagine being a single mother of four with no family trying to find you, but not by choice, but by abandonment, trauma, and a broken system who left you to raise yourself before you even knew who you were. Now imagine trying to be this perfect mom anyway, and not because anyone expected it because of you, because you swore to give your children the life you'd never had, stable love, a stable loving and a whole family. Every time life stripped you for everything, your home, your safety, your dignity, and you started over. Every time I forgave the unforgivable people who turned away and punished you for your grace, they smiled in your face while tearing you down and tearing the family that you built to love, discipline, and self-sacrifice. As you lifted them up, they kicked you down. As you forgave, they held grudges. And worse, they made it their mission to destroy you, and the one thing you fought to protect, my children. Now imagine the system, the one who swore to protect families and children, failing you repeatedly, not just as a mother, but as a former foster child who was never reunified with her own biological parents. When reunification was no longer possible, they placed me with strangers they deemed good enough, wiped their hands clean, closed the case, damage done, no healing, no justice, no accountability. Imagine losing your voice, not because you didn't speak, but because your truth didn't fit their narrative, because your skin, your strength, and your inconsistency to let go of your constitutional rights, your Fourth Amendment right to be secure in your persons and in your home, your Fourth Amendment right to due process and equal protection, made you an inconvenience, not a mother worth listening to. Imagine taking two children to safety following a domestic violence incident, not only to end up in handcuffs, but charged with six criminal counts and being beat up by the Dickinson Police Department, not for harming anyone, not for breaking the law, but for surviving, for protecting those same babies that I once was, for doing what any good mother and any good human would do when the violence threatens their home. Imagine being told that you're unfit, dangerous, and unstable, labeled as violent and erratic, simply because you demand fairness, because you stood for your rights, when everyone else begs you to stay quiet and accept the injustice as a faith. Now imagine the very people we entrusted to help you that swore to uphold the law, protect children, and serve injustice, turning a blind eye, and imagine the cost of their indifference, where my one-year-old abused, neglected, and exposed to drugs while under state care. My daughter stripped of her innocence with her mind being controlled, subject to emotional and physiological abuse. My six-year-old taken, not only to be two months later, have a black eye and no explanation for it. My five-year-old wondering why his mommy didn't come to his birthday party, and now he's feeling that same abandonment feeling that I feel. And now he's feeling that same abandonment feeling that I felt as a child. Imagine reaching out for help, calling Scott Decker, who said he'll call you back and never did. But instead, you was hit with another charge. Scott, a man in a position of power, you stood for nothing. As this, as the saying goes, a man that stands for nothing will fall for anything. Now imagine knowing not just the feeling, but knowing that your civil rights were violated. That when you tried to report a crime, you were the one that was beaten and tased by the Dickinson Police Officers. You, as a mother, trying to do the right thing for someone else's children. And when you raised your voice to say this is wrong, the prosecutor looked you in your face and told you she didn't care, that she was taking your case to trial anyway, Christina. Not to protect the victims, not to punish the ones who did wrong, but just to take away everything that you feel that you control. I will never fear doing what is right, not now, not ever. You may try to paint me as unstable, combative or unfit, but I'm a mother, I'm a survivor and I am a woman who has endured more than most of you could ever survive. And I'm still standing. I stand for my children. I stand for the Constitution. I stand for the truth and even when it makes others feel uncomfortable, I'm going to stand for every child that never got the voice like I did it. I'm going to stand for every mother that was failed by y'all's system, that was meant to protect us. This ain't a hypothetical, this is my story. And if it rained, yes, it did, a lot of times, but it never rained on my children. I never let my children get wet. I may have stumbled, yes, many times, but I never failed. Not when they took my kids and not now. When they tried to label me and dehumanize the best thing that I've ever tried to make sure was perfect, my mother. I carried the weight of trauma, injustice and betrayal and I still rose. Because I'm not just fighting for me, I'm fighting for every kid who has cried in silence with nobody to hold them, for every mother silent in the courtroom, for every truth buried under the weight of the power and the prejudice. I want to leave you with one last thing. Imagine being born into this world that never gave you a chance, put into a system that never even cared. Imagine being born Erica Lindsay, but that being erased and replaced and your name was changed to Tariqa James. As your identity, your story and your very existence could be rewritten like I've never existed before. Try finding yourself piece by piece, broken while bouncing from home to home in foster care systems with no answers, just confusion, trauma, survival and no justice. But today, I know exactly who I am. I stand here today and I'm going to tell you, I am the mother, the very great mother, who has always been the perfect mother to all of her four children and any children who wasn't with a mother. Lailena Serenity, Jordan Holmes, Jordan Jerome, Jacoby Isaac, Josiah Zaire, Holmes. I want you guys to remember their names because if they don't get justice, I will come for everybody's job. I do not care because behind those four that I birthed, my intelligent, beautiful, happy children, is a mother who fought through fire to protect them and to love them. A mother who has never stopped fighting. Our lives don't, our lives begin to end.
That's five minutes, Ms. Holmes.
The day when we become silent about things that matter. I am a mother, Tariqa Holmes, who refused to be silent. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Tuttle, oath of office ordinances.
Good evening, members of the commission. Um, that's, that's riveting. Um, I don't know if you heard about the baby that was stolen in Sanford Hospital? Same thing. We've got an out of control legal system and Dickinson's is about as broke as it gets. Your judge, Judge Keel, hasn't had an oath of office for 40 years. We can't find an original oath of office when Judge Keel. Christina Wankel, we've been back and forth. First she didn't need one, then she went and got one. In fact, I think it was Bobby Joe and I came and testified that you guys didn't, they didn't have oaths of offices. And he, sheriff told me that, hey, the day after that, Christina Wankel ran around the county and got people's oaths of offices. It says right in the century code, if you don't have your oath of office, by the time you take office, that office is vacant. The reason they don't follow the Constitution is they don't take an oath of office. Ms. Wankel, everything I keep hearing about her is retaliatory. I've been coming to Dickinson for eight years selling Trump merchandise on the, on the right of way. Everybody knows that. It wasn't until I got a call, well, actually, we, we came up with the oath of office situation. Then I get a call from Gladstone, young lady says, are you Charles Tuttle? Yeah. Are you the guy that knows the Constitution and all that? Well, what's up? Well, our, our city mall allowed us to open our senior and community center. I said, what? Yeah. So I went to, I went to the town meeting, just like this one. And guess what? I see Ms. Wankel. Oh, surprise. Surprise. And there's not one, they, they required them to pave their, their, their parking lot and have, have a place for a van, but nothing in Gladstone is paved. So I called Corey Lee, I said, hey, Corey Lee, here's the situation. He said, come to the county commission meeting and we'll get them on the agenda. Within two days, we had that place open and had the problem solved. Not once did she offer or try and solve any of their problems. This is a senior center. Next thing I know, I'm talking at the Southwest Patriots and I get a summons. From her, charging me with selling without merchandise without a permit. In court, she lied. We just went down to the county recorder, the property that I'm on is owned by the state of North Dakota. It's not even owned by the city. But she lied in court and said it's a right of way. She's a problem. You should look at the contract. She's an LLC. Her law firm is an individual. She doesn't even have a contract with her own law firm to represent you folks. And technically, when she becomes in, in the court, she's a public servant in the court. She has to have an oath of office. Doesn't matter if she's appointed or if she's elected. But she's not even appointed. There's no proof that she's appointed in any of the positions that she's undertaking. She is actually practicing law under the color of law. I have never seen anybody so mean, vindictive and outside the mainstream of the law. And I'm going to be taking on Tariqa's case. We're going to get an army because they just, every time, I even see it with Seth. CPS, she sent CPS to Seth Helgeson's children's school. You have to have what's called an excited utterance of a child for any reason for CPS to show up at the school doors, to talk to the child without a parent knowing about it. This is the stuff she's doing behind closed doors. She's putting you guys in liability and you're going to find out how liable this is. Because everything she's doing is illegal. She has no oath of office. She calls the Attorney General's office and she says, well, I have the Attorney General under my thumb. Well, I don't have much to say about an Attorney General either. Okay? He doesn't know that, you know, the destruction of I E emails government property is a crime. He doesn't know any of that stuff, but he goes after, you know, initiated measures like term limits and says it was fraud. The other thing I want to bring up real quickly is you folks need to ask for your money back from the League of Cities, the Association of Counties. When they lobbied against Measure Four, it was a clear violation of 16.1-10. And if she knows what she's doing, she'll agree with me. You are entitled to get your money back because they have no right to spend taxpayer dollars or even energy on opposing an initiated measure by the people. They are funded by tax dollars and they used it against the people that initiated that measure. I was one of them. I'm going around to all the different cities and counties and saying you have to go and get the money back for 2023, 2024. They started that opposition in both those years. Thank you.
Our next public comment sign up is Ryan Masano, Memorial Day Staff Matters.
Uh, there are a number of questions I have for the commission, but before I begin those questions, another citizen has submitted some very troubling and disturbing allegations about the Dickinson Police Department. And if it turns out those are true, the entire leadership of the city and the police department is going to have a massive shakeup. What we do know is we have a police officer in Dickinson named Finn Lason, who was stopped and arrested for a DUI, which was reduced to a reckless driving. That just happened in 2024. This is one of the least disturbing allegations that have been made against officers in the police department. But how does a police officer keep his job who is driving under the influence? What kind of leadership allows police officers to stay on the force when it's clear they are not fit to be a police officer? Also, how can a police department successfully uphold laws outlawing drunk driving when one police officer just had a DUI in March of last year? And I'll talk about the corrupt Dickinson press later on, but why haven't they done their jobs? Why are they hiding information from Dickinson residents? If they are hiding this, what else are they hiding? So I'd like to have those allegations responded to. Where there is smoke, there is fire. And the extremely disturbing treatment I've received up here in the past six months for the crime of exposing evil and telling the truth leads me to believe there is a lot going on in secret that needs to be exposed. For the gullible people who think the television, news media, Facebook and Dickinson press are going to protect you and expose evil, you will be waiting for the next 1,000 years as the newspaper, Facebook and media are not your friends. They are not here to inform citizens, they are here to program citizens. Here are the questions, uh, just actually one, I don't have time for all of them. I've sent everyone an email in the past six months, you have my emails, so you could respond to that. How was Vanguard contracted to do property tax assessing and how much are they paid? Careful research shows Vanguard, Tan Street and BlackRock have majority controlling interest in nearly every major corporation in America. Hard, um, so I also want to speak about Ms. Wanko, a popular, um, topic of conversation, but one that's needful. Uh, making 17,000 a month as a city attorney, which I think that's about half of what the President of the United States pays, who's over 330 million people. So I fail to see why a salary like that is actually, um, necessary. There's numerous citizens from neighboring cities who have complaints about her interfering in their cities as well. She was the highest bidder. Now, and when there's a bidding process, how does the highest bidder win? I thought the lowest bidder was supposed to win. What's the point of even having bidding when the highest bidder gets in? So, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe quality is being sacrificed, but in her case, she's very aware of what other cities in the state is doing, but she's unaware of the law that governs all the cities in all the states. And that's the Constitution that she doesn't demonstrate being familiar with at all. Uh, I'm going to end with Memorial Day, which just passed. We need to understand that every American military soldier that passed since World War I deserves to be mourned twice. First, because they signed up to fight for and defend America. And second, because they were deceived into fighting in military conflicts, which America had no business being in and which were not for American interests at all. And lastly, if we had a convicted murderer in the room who belongs in jail, I am convinced the police would have arrested him within minutes and hauled him out. Well, to my mind and to many of our minds, deliberate lying is just as bad as murder. When I'm around a liar, I get uneasy because I know my safety is in jeopardy. That is how I feel about nearly every newspaper, television station, Facebook and nearly all the media, because they are nearly all lying and deceitful snakes. And that goes for you back there, Evan Boutau. How can the people ever determine the truth when the media is daily working to deceive people and to hide the truth from them while lying about those of us who tell the truth? So it's outrageous to me that Boutau and Miller have the audacity to consistently show their faces up here and that they are the leading voices reporting the news for Dickinson. That is why Dickinson has such growing problems because Evan James and the rest of the Dickinson press, and indeed, it starts with the three biggest newspapers in America, The New York Times, The Washington Post and Wall Street Journal are all controlled by you-know-who and have been for decades. Freedom of the press was not given to the press to abuse their privilege to deceive the people and then to attack the right of citizens like me to be able to speak. I never attacked the Dickinson press's right to speak, but they have been yelling and screaming for months that I should be silenced, using their usual deceit that I'm not talking about city business. As if they care about city business when their owner owns multiple newspapers and is unlikely to have stepped foot in Dickinson for the last five decades.
And that is the end of our signed up public comments. Commissioners? Do we have anything that you wish to discuss? Mr. Riddle?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. I have one item. When we began in, with COVID in 2020, is when we started to broadcast on YouTube because people weren't allowed into the commission chamber. That, um, process of not, not being able to have people here in person is long gone. So the need to broadcast on YouTube anymore is redundant. We already record, we have it on channel 19 and we rebroadcast on channel 19. So I would like to, it was never formally adopted that we use YouTube, but what I would like to do is to look for a motion to stop using YouTube to broadcast our meetings and continue using Consolidated to do our, our broadcast and then rebroadcast.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Bear?
I make the motion that we stop using YouTube and, uh, use local broadcasting.
I have a motion to continue with the local broadcast on Consolidated and no longer use YouTube.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick, the motion was by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Riddle?
Yeah, so one of the, the, I see an issue with this. Um, I don't have Consolidated, so it's tough for me to be able to go back and watch existing meetings without having to request them or whatever the case is. Those that maybe don't have computer or, or not computer, but, uh, that don't have cable, but have a phone, if they need to watch it, if you don't have Consolidated, how can they watch it without requesting it to go back and watch it?
Uh, if I'm correct, Commissioner Riddle, it is on our website.
Okay, so a guy can go on the web?
Yes, you can go on our website and watch, watch it. You can go back, as long as we've been recording video has, um, as long as my tenure has been on here, there's recorded videos, I think even prior to that, as, as long as, um, Consolidated has been recording for us, we have always logged, they are logged on our website. So anybody can go on there and, and view them. Any other comments? No, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Commissioners? Now I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.